All right, Donina Felbisch?
Here.
James Hetstrom is currently absent, as is Scott Long, Diane Landers.
Here.
Jennifer Elliott.
Here.
Molly Wolf.
Here.
And Claire Yersten.
Here. All right, next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the May 10th, 2014 meeting. You have seen the differences of directions to the minutes?
I did not.
Model and conversion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded and seconded to approve the minutes from the May 10th meeting. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion has been passed. All right, we will move on to the issue of the evening. We'll review case DK 1422, and we're looking at the JE Cosette Trust. Cosette? Cosette? How do I say it?
Cosette.
Cosette. Okay, Cosette. First of all, we'll start out, and most of you are probably new to planning commission meetings, so I'll do a little review of the order of speaking. First, the applicant will present their case, then the planning commission will have time to discuss statements made by the applicant, and ask any questions of the applicant and of county staff that they may have. The board will then discuss the answers. Once the board discusses, once the board discussion rests, the applicant will be then asked to sit down, and members of the public are allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please raise your hand once called upon, and please approach the podium, and state your name and address for the record. And if you haven't already signed in, I believe there's a sign up sheet. Dustin, is it over at the table there?
Yep.
Please make sure you sign in. This meeting is being recorded. Please be clear, concise, and refrain from repeating comments from previous speakers. We've got quite a few people here tonight. I don't know if you all are planning on speaking. We want to make sure that everyone's heard tonight. Also, we want to make sure that all of this course tonight is handled in a simple manner, whether you're for or against the motion. The applicant will be given a chance to answer questions from the public. After the public comment session is ended, the planning commission will again discuss and ask questions that may have arisen during the public comment session. After the questions and discussion, the board will review the planning and zoning golden factors and the administrative report, and will take action. All zoning changes, conditional uses, and subdivision zoning will go from this board to the county commissioners with recommendation for approval or denial.
And I wanted to add something here, since this is a preliminary plat. Whatever decision comes from the planning commission just goes to the county commission, and then the county commission will make a decision. If this goes to final plat, that's when the county commission sees it. So it'll go preliminary plat, the decision, whatever decision's made by the planning commission. If it goes farther than that, then the planning commission will see this again in what we call a final plat, which will be if there's any changes recommended, anything like that, that's where those will show up, and then that's where it goes into the county commission. So nothing, if approved tonight, nothing happens yet. That's just the, yes, this is what it is, and we need changes or whatnot, and then that goes to final plat. So this is actually a pre-meeting before that will go into effect. So we'll all get letters again and stuff.
With that, let's start with DK 1422. Dustin, can you give us background from your administrative report?
Sure. Like it says, the request for subdivision, it's 1700 in Daisy Road. This is what we consider a low-density subdivision by standard. It's because of the size of the acreage and the number of lots. It's kind of, it's kind of subjective in that, you know, in that in the country, that's kind of a more dense area than we're calling, but just outside of town, that's what they would call a low-density, and that's where the state standards are set. But Jack came in and approached myself, and wanting information on how the process goes, so we sat down and went over the process. And through communication between myself, Mr. Cosette, their developer, their engineer, and our county engineer in our department, we sat down and got all the information together. They submitted that to me as in form of application, and that's where we are today.
Dustin, I didn't hear you. What did you say about low-density?
That this is considered a low-density based on the fact that it's only, it's less than 25 residences in the year in that big of an area. Again, like I said, that's a standard, kind of, that's what you would see normal outside of a city, and depending on the area, it looks more density, but by definition, it's low-density. So when we say that, that's where it's.
So low-density has to do with the subdivision, not the area around it?
Right.
Okay.
The applicant, would you like to present your case?
Yes, please. Microphone.
Speak loud.
Members of the planning commission, county officials, and citizens of Dickinson County, my name is Jonathan C. Jack Cosette. I reside at 1060 South Marymount Salina, Kansas. I'm the operation manager for Cosette Farms, and I am representing the JE Cosette Trust. The trust is owned by my brother, Dr. Gerald Cosette, and his wife, Dani. I have had extensive experience with developments, including the Lower East Subdivision, Guile Edition, East Bank Edition, Arrowhead Townhomes, PDD, and multifamily apartments, all in Salina, Kansas. With me tonight was supposed to be Peter Earls, but that Reynolds is representing Earl's Engineering and Inspection, and Mr. David Rosner is a general contractor for Country by Design. Also available this evening by speakerphone, if needed, is Mr. Dave Zook, a project director with SCS Aquats here, a water consultant company. We've used him in the past for some water issues that we've had. He is currently in Illinois, but could possibly be available if we need to. As part of Cosette Farms, we raise full-blood Wagyu cattle and sell cattle to other producers around the United States. Our travels have taken us from California to Vermont, and we, and we have witnessed firsthand the popularity of projects like we are proposing. We are not trying to sell a piece of ground, but rather a rural community setting with amenities such as a proposed fishing pond, walking path, and picnic and play area for the enjoyment of the owners and guests. All common areas will be maintained by the association as set forth by the Country by Design covenants. If you don't believe the trend is here... I think I better put my glasses on.
It's dry.
I'm trying. It's kind of dark over here. If you don't believe the trend is here, all you have to do is go to your local grocery store and look at the all-natural, green, environmental-friendly, et cetera. Our general, a couple of examples, our general contractor, Mr. Rosner, is also consulting on a project like ours in Yerby, South America. And I just, another example was, I picked this up from this line at Journal. This article, well, it was basically advertisement, but it's Kansas Wesleyan University in Salina is offering a class by Dr. Wes Jackson, founder of the Land Institute, on sustainable agricultural. So the, there is a big demand, especially around other parts of the country. In closing, my family has owned farms in Salina Dickinson County for over 30 years. We are also farmers. We respect our land, as well as our surrounding neighbors' land, and we would never do anything to have a negative impact on it. We believe having large 10-acre agricultural lots will offer the buyers of our lots the opportunity and flexibility of alternative energy and growing their own sustainable foods if they so choose. I will try to answer any questions you may have. We believe, we think we have a great concept. Thank you for your time, and we hope you will decide favorably on our application.
Thank you very much. Board, any discussion or questions for Mr. Cosette?
Would you read the part again? It's that you'd never do anything to what? It was towards the end.
Negative.
That's it. We are farmers. We respect our land, and as well as our surrounding neighbors' land, and we would never do anything to negatively impact it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I know that all of the board has a packet that includes your neighborhood, your proposed neighborhood covenants, along with, I'm not sure what you called it in there, your agricultural use notice, but can you give a brief summary for everyone here?
Sure.
Because they haven't had a chance to read that. Kind of overview of your covenants and the purpose of those, and your agricultural use notice.
Our first thing, I could pass this around and show it to people, too. It's, it's...
And it should be included in your packets.
It was.
It's kind of lengthy, the covenants are.
Well, yeah, the coven, did we, you, okay. But our, I believe Dickinson County doesn't have this, so kind of what we copied Salina County is, when you went in for a building permit, they wanted you to have, they didn't want you to come back and say five years later, "Oh, they're out spraying at 2:00 in the morning, I can't sleep," you know? So that's why we're having any buyers would sign this agreement, that they... Is this in the package, too?
Yes.
Okay. So they can understand going in that it's going to be agricultural land around it, and it'll always be agricultural land. Our covenants are pretty, they're lengthy, but we put kind of a summary of that. I think the biggest thing is, it's all going to remain agricultural, only one single-family residence. There's not going to be any, I mean, they have to build a house, they just can't go out and have a man cave out there. You know, they can't go out and buy a lot and put a morton building. They have to have a residential house there. Animals, what we put in here is, you know, that gets pretty iffy. Now, this is also preliminary, so it's not said in stone, but, you know, we just said that any type of animals would be all right if they were on a, you know, a traditional Kansas farm, you know, no exotic animals, no lions, tigers, anything like that.
For personal use.
And for personal use, this is not going to be, they're not going to be raising cattle to sell, you know, at the sale barn, or just for their, you know, they would be raising their own, you know, garden, and possibly having a steer or something that they would feed out. But very non-commercial. I think the biggest thing on our covenants is no trailers, modular homes, and we have a square foot, what was it?
Two thousand.
Two thousand square foot minimum. So, I mean, the type of homes, if they're going to purchase a lot here, they're going to have a really nice home, and we didn't even, I think Dustin touched on that on the tax basis, but, you know, it's, if they're going to buy a lot here, they're going to put a nice home on it, so.
To clarify something, Dickinson County just actually, they're talking with the state attorney general and our, well, their office, and our county counselor, we just started doing the agricultural use notice application for them to sign. We used to give out a pamphlet that said, you know, you're in a rural area. We didn't know if we could require somebody to sign something that acknowledged that, basically, a memorandum of understanding saying, "You understand you're building in a rural area, this, you know, this can happen, and we keep this with the building permits," which we keep permanently. And we just started requiring that about a month and a half ago, so we do have that in place as well.
And we, when we talked to Dustin originally, I think he brought that up in his report, that there was concern on water use. This will all be in, we have approval for 15 water hookups from rural water, too, and I think someone was, that's why I had talked to Dave Zook earlier, when I, when I saw that, our water consultant, about private wells. You know, I don't think there would, it's not, I was telling Dustin that we were, we were hoping to get the type of individuals that would, you know, that would want this property, might want to consider some alternative energy sources, or, or, you know, like, you know, we just mentioned solar, geothermal, wind power. But, I mean, we're not requiring people to do that. We're just giving it an option. I think with the option of the larger lots, you know, you have, you know, you couldn't put wind power on a residential, you know, in-town type lot, or a 1-acre lot, or something like that. We're not telling people to drill private wells because we have water, but I don't think we'd want to hinder the person that bought a lot and said, you know, "You can't have a private well." Our consultant said, we own the water rights to our property, and our consultant said, he was, he couldn't make sense out of it. He said, "I don't think we would impact a neighbor, you know, two or three miles away on his water table for what would be used in this little development. They're not going to be watering, you know, masses amount of water that would lower any water table."
Any other questions, discussion from the board?
Can you give me a little history of this property? Who you bought it from, or?
I, I'd have to ask my brother that. I know he's owned it. We, we moved out here in, I moved out here in 1982 from Kansas City, and I, I remember before I started working for him, we always hunted on it, so it'd been there a long time. I would say at least 20 years. Well, I've worked for my brother for 13 years, and we hunted on it 20 years before. I'm not sure exactly of the...
Okay. So you currently farm it?
Yes.
Okay.
Cosette Farms does, and we've always farmed it.
Do you have, how much interest do you currently have in individuals that are wanting to do this? If it gets passed, do you have people that are already ready to go ahead and get going with the project?
Ten of them, yes. And we would keep it into agriculture anyway, until the lots developed anyway.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You got to realize, I'm a city girl.
Okay.
I drove by this this weekend, and when I drove by, the lots around me that are farmed, they look like they're really farmed. That looked like it was just kind of sitting there. Is it no-till? Do you have anything planted in there right now?
Yeah, we've no-till for years, and we were about a week late getting our beans in there, but they're expected to be soybeans planted in there.
Okay.
We're kind of on the feast or famine, you know, right now, we're more on the feast, and we can't get in there, but they should have been planted, but they'll, they'll be planted in there.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, we are no-till, and I did have it all sprayed and looking nice, but the big weeds grow pretty quick right in, in the grasses.
Can you give us a background? You named off some of your other developments that you had experienced.
They're all in Salina, Kansas.
Okay. Are they, is there any of those developments that are like this one?
No, they were all inside the city limits of Salina. Lower East Subdivision was 42 residential lots. The Guile Edition is where the Sterling House was, or, no, it's the, it's next to the Sterling House on Ohio. Arrowhead Townhomes was on Linda Lane. You could, it had a pond around it, too, and we developed that.
This will be your first kind of ag move?
Yes.
How did you find the people that are interested in your 10 lots?
It's not very hard. My, I know a lot of people in Salina that, I owned JC's Farm Grill for 13 years, it was kind of the, the most popular eating and watering hole. I've known a lot of people. My, my brother is a surgeon, and his wife is a nurse anesthetist at the hospital, and there's a lot of potential people coming into Salina region that are looking for this type of property. So they know a lot of people, and I know a lot of people in Salina. I'm not just saying Salina, I think we really haven't even pushed the issue, just with contacts that we know. I mean, David, how many years have you been? He mostly does custom houses. In the county, you want to get out of the city of Salina, the hassles there, but 30 years? Yeah. And he just finished our house. We built a house on 627 South Donmire Road, which is at our farming headquarters, so it's all custom houses. And we kind of went with a geothermal because we had the availability of water, and usually if you, you know, some people say, "Well, you're just taking a well out of there," I mean, the water out of the well, but we have two wells. We're pumping it through the system, and it goes right back into the other system, and there's other types of, you know, like I said, we're not trying to tell people, "Oh, we want you to do this, you have to do this." It's, you know, it's their choice, but there's, we want, well, my wife and I wanted to build a house that was that way, to keep our utility bills down. I'm getting a little bit older, and I was looking for some way of, you know, cutting our expenses down. That's why David built our house with 2x6 framing, and so we're hoping to save a lot of money on that, that way, and we're, there's a lot of people that are, would like to do that also. But, I mean, like I said, on the, anything that someone would do, I mean, it's in our covenants, if they take power, you know, that's not going to do your whole house, but it would help, but, you know, everything has to be with the approval of any, you know, county or restrictions, anything that they would do.
Were you on the homeowners board, or in charge of it, until the neighborhood moved out?
Well, if you look at the covenants, it says that the JE Cosette Trust, and I should have changed it, I saw that when we did it, it says, there's two classes of voting things, and it said five, but we would probably change that to eight, so we would have controlling interest till...
Till there's a majority.
Till there's a majority, and then they would take over. And then that stop ceases. I think it says that in the covenants. Once there's a majority, that they'll elect their own officers and take care of everything from then on.
Any other questions from Mr. Cosette and the board?
I don't have any at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to public discussion. If you'd like to be first, please stand up, go to the podium, state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Kelly Fink, 1675 Deer Road, which would be about a mile east of that, but I'm the operator of the farming and ranching, family farming and ranching operation that consists of the 260 acres bordering north and northwest on the proposed subdivision, 540 acres bordering the east, 600 acres bordering the southeast, and 280 acres bordering indirectly south of the proposed housing development. Our family's operated in that area for over 109 years. Very few people know the area and the potential negative effects of this development in that area, outside of my family and a few neighbors. Dad grew up and was raised out there, and spent some years of his life out there. Other than about 10 years for myself, college, and some corporate work afterwards, that's what I've done as well. I object to the proposed change in the current zoning based on five key areas. First one is groundwater impact. The base of our family operation lies 1/4 mile east of the proposed property, and relies entirely on groundwater or well water for watering cattle and spraying our crop ground. Well water, groundwater in that area is best described as a crapshoot in both quantity and in quality. I was talking to Dad, we can't remember on that quarter section, there ever been more than one water well, and we always heard that the reason there was no more wells is because of the availability of groundwater there. I know I can affect Dan's well a quarter mile west from there, basically right across the road of the proposed deal if I'm pulling water hard, and those wells are over a quarter mile apart. Talking to some of the neighbors, Jim Tally, and he'd be catty-corner across the section from that, claims that when, and I talked to Ray about this, Jim said when he sees Ray's irrigation well running, that Jim's well sucks air. I've also, my fear is the potential number of wells in this proposed area would basically run me out of groundwater. Also, Dan's neighbor took Dan to the west one. Next area is surface water impact. All of the surface water runoff water drains across crop ground that I operate on. I'm greatly concerned if proposed developments allow tariffs that will be leveled and greatly increasing the volume and speed of runoff water, and also silt deposits as well. All of this area is classified as highly renewable land. I also have a picture that all Dan took last night after an inch and a half of rain, how much water comes off 1/4 of that, basically across Dan's yard.
Eleven thirty, it was over there a couple days prior to that.
And we've seen water go over 1700 Avenue coming off of that as well.
Okay, this would be Daisy Road.
That would be Daisy Road.
This would be the quarter we're talking about, and this would be Daniel Sexton's across the road.
Yes. I'd also like to touch a little bit on rural water availability. I'm a former board member and chairman of the board of Rural Water District Number Two. Kevin Harris is also here as a former chairman, and that area has been shut off to free benefit units for over 14 years. That water line that's going to serve this area runs as far west as Niles Road in Salina County. That's why there's been very little to almost no development in that area because there's been no availability. That's probably a different discussion, but I think Kevin may address some of those issues as well. When I went to build my house, a mile away from there, on an 8-inch line, I was denied service on an 8-inch line, and they have not changed one pump, one line, and now they're saying they can service 15 benefit units off a 6-inch line, less than a mile away. We actually had to give up a pasture unit where we were feeding cattle at, so I could have rural water off the 8-inch line. One of the pressure concern areas is on the north side of that section, the proposed housing development. The next area that I'd like to touch on is traffic safety, and this impacts not only me, but everyone who uses 1700 Avenue. I'm glad, somebody said they had, they drove past it this weekend, if they noticed the big hill on 1700 Avenue. That is a completely blind hill, basically splits, the property basically straddles that hill, so you got a quarter of a mile, or actually less than a quarter of a mile, once you come across that hill. I've had several, the heavy truck semi-traffic out there is just unbelievable, grain headed up to Salina, rock trucks, but I've had several near misses coming over that hill on signal, coming eastbound, coming back from Salina, coming over the hill, getting down to Daisy Road, and waiting for traffic to clear. I've actually had semis pop that hill and walk through breaks up behind me, and that's a quarter mile away. Putting any entrances off 1700 for a proposed development, I think, I think would be deadly. Also, headed westbound, it's not uncommon, I think other people attest, if I'm headed westbound with a heavy truck up that hill, I just cringe because people won't pay any, any attention to the no passing line, and they'll go right out around me up the hill the other way. Also, with the traffic issues, the Daisy Road is a sand road that has no base rock on it. I would be really concerned at some point getting to 10, 15 extra families on that area, the amount of car traffic and the potential hazards that that would create, that Daisy Road and 1700 intersection, and also on the, on the, on the west side of the hill where they show the entrance going out on 1700. I think if that entrance goes out on 1700, you'd have less than a quarter of a mile from the top of the hill to that entrance, too. And keep in mind, with the semi-traffic out there, it's not one semi, now and again, it's running 2, 3, 4 in a line, popping that hill both ways, east and westbound. The next area I'd like to touch on being the community, and I do not believe it's a suitable area for a subdivision. I'm locating a subdivision next to probably the largest Greyhound farm in Dickinson County, in the middle of over 1,000 head of cattle, and it's an intensely managed agricultural area. There's, we have a little pasture there, but it's basically crop ground, there's a little CRP on the section south of there. I don't think that's in the best, I don't think that's in the best interest. I could foresee whether we sign a waiver or not. I could perceive whether we sign a waiver or not, I think there's people that's dealt with issues and people, once people sign the waiver, they change their mind. Also, in looking at the legal on that, from a personal standpoint, where I guess the Greyhound Farm is exempt from nuisance claims, my guess is if something smells out there and they really can't blame the Greyhound Farm, they're going to blame Kurt and Ray a mile west or me a quarter mile east. That's a lot of cattle and of course, we can't smell anything because we're not sure if it's cattle or a bitch. Bringing people out in the country, I think their noses are a little bit sore in that. Also in the area with, I guess I looked at, on the website, Dickinson County had a printout about living in rural areas. And the third line of it says agriculture is very important to the Dickinson County economy, has priority in the rural areas. And I don't think allowing a subdivision such as this would support that statement, that agriculture being a priority. There may be some areas that is not as intensely managed as this, there may be some areas where there's not dangerous traffic issues such as this that it may work fine. But our family's experience out there, I'm terrified of, terrified of the traffic, terrified of potential water issues. And I think by making this any change, I think we'd be setting a precedent, would be devastating to agriculture in Dickinson County. You know, if we would allow a subdivision that close to not many cattle, a large Greyhound Farm and an intensive managed area, then I guess why would we have zoning anywhere in Dickinson County? I think that's about as intense areas as can be. So, that's all I had. You have questions or?
Thank you for your comments. Kelly, Daisy Road, you said it's sanded but no base rock. Is it sand or is it just dirt?
That road up until about the mid-eighties was black dirt and when they worked on the bridge over by...
Ninety-five.
What's that?
Ninety-five.
Was it ninety-five?
A little later.
When they closed, when they closed the bridge over by Terry Ingramanson's house, there was some people lived up on the corner that had school kids and so they put some sand on it to, so the school bus could get up there. Get an inch and a half of rain, a few cars is fine, you get five, 10 cars down it.
I can't get down it. I can't get down it, I took home a truck when it rained.
Yeah, when it rains.
It's real sideways, all over the road.
The other, and I'm on the township board as well, the other, Daisy Road south of there is black dirt for three miles. You go north of there, after a mile it turns black dirt for another mile. It's black dirt east of there, a mile north. And typically what happens when people move to the country, they want to go explore the area and we have this, we have this bad thing nowadays called GPS navigators and they don't instruct people as to whether the road is paved, blocked, or dirt. So, hope that answered your question.
I do have a question.
Sure.
You indicated you're on the township board on Daisy Road, okay, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity as a board to discuss this, but if this was to pass and the entry in way was on or off of, excuse me, Daisy Road, what is your thoughts on who is going to upgrade that up to the entrance to Country Lake?
Well, when we had our township meeting back in March, the whole county township meeting, they discussed that area. There's been people building in places and expect the county and the township to bring them a road to that. The suggestion was that the developer posed to upgrade the road and that the township would maintain it once the base rock and surface rock was put down. So, to me, that seems reasonable.
To substantiate that, we also, because right before and during that meeting, we have, we developed...
Is that the subdivision standard?
The, actually what, because it's not a subdivision, if a person owns a piece of land and they set the house on it and it fits and it's not multiple houses, that's not a subdivision, you can't hold them to subdivision standards. Well, what we can do is we can require that they provide proof that they've talked to the township board. And I believe that Brad Holland showed like at the back of, on our back, now the back of our building permits, they actually have a township agreement that's...
Yeah, I think Dustin's correct.
And we, on the back of now, we actually, down here, we have residential structures being able to access to a deterrent on the building's road, leasing back this permit, information from the township being required. This is actually the township road agreement where they have to take it and they have to show us that they've talked to the township and what the plan is because there are some where township say they'll cover half, whatever, but they have to put that here and that's attached to the building permit. So without that, we don't really have a road or anything else. So just to substantiate, because I was talking about the real estate.
I might add real quick, back to the groundwater issue. I think if you run up and down the road and look in that area, it'd be hard for us to find more than about two wells on a quarter section. And like I said, the quantity and quality of water can vary within a few hundred yards. And so I'm not sure, you know, based on the cattle, and it's not a feedlot, it's a background for grass. I'm not sure on that 80 acres by drilling another well anywhere that put 10 houses up there, 15 houses and they put eight, 10 wells down that close that I have groundwater. That's all I have.
My name is Jim Tally, out of 301 1800 Avenue, which is catty cornered from the plot that you're talking, right across the mile section. My wife and Vicki and I have owned that property since 1979. I've talked to Kelly, I've talked to some of these others, so this might be a little repetition, I'll just go through it real fast. I had to put a well in there at the time. That's where the old Sunnyside School said, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but at the time I brought that property, it came from the township to me and then I had to put it on the tax rules. Well, I couldn't get on a water line, so I put in a well. And that well was put in right at 1980. And I spent 18 years trying to get on the water district. I paid my money to be on there, but it took 18 years before I ever got a tap. And I didn't get a tap until the rural water district tied in with Avaline's water treatment plant. Because the nitrates were so bad, they were suggesting everybody buy bottled water that was on that water district. They didn't want you to be, you know, giving your kids that water. At any rate, that well was set there and I didn't live in the house at the time, I raised some pigs on that, on that property. And I had to haul a load of pigs to town on a Monday and it'd take me until Tuesday to wash the trailer out. In a dry year, that well would suck air. I don't necessarily take Ray's name in vain when he starts to center pivot, but...
You know, I've never heard that. If you told me, I thought you said...
I hope not. Ray's got a good well, but it does. It has a tremendous effect. When I finally got on the water district, we just moved that well over to irrigate the yard. And we can't do that. This last year with the drought, there's been no water, yard water. The other wells in that area, I think the ones east of me, they're stinky, they're nasty water. There's just not good water in the ground there. So that's why you don't see a lot of water. The point being that if you, you can't restrict somebody who buys a 10 acre plot if I put in their own well in. You're not going to be able to regulate that. They're buying the ground and that's their use and that's what they can do, they can drill their own well. And therefore you're going to have an impact. And it probably would have an impact on me also. At any rate, I also served on the township board for Garfield Township. And in that, I'd like to refer to the letter that you probably got from Brian Lang and that second paragraph down there. If you would read that, Brian is a very intelligent individual, he works for the government. He couldn't be here for this meeting. But I'd like for you all just to take a little bit of time and read that second paragraph where he's talking about the runoff on that, the development acreage. Thank you all, ready? All right. And like Dan says, the water runs across his intersection right there on 1700 and Daisy. That water also crossed at the half, about the half mile line where the tire lines go across through there, there's a draw through there, that will wash out when we get a rain. If you go on down to where 1800 turns, which all this property here will drain, what Brian is saying, there's a portion of this does drain to where they want to put a retention pond. Then the other section of that where there's no drainage, retention ponds or anything in there, that drains on to the, be the northwest corner. That cuts into a waterway that's on Monty's property and it goes on down, I don't know who owns that now, I think Wilson owns that now, but there's a little concrete box culvert there. And that water is washed across there. Now, there's some large rocks in there that they put in for riprap years ago. And I have seen those rocks washed 50 to 60 feet out into fields from the water that comes off that hill. And seeing you're not stopping any of that water on the, on the east side of that property where that would come down through that. And I think Terry will verify that.
The road is washed out on both sides of my house, right down to the bottom, and you could not pass after the road's washed out down to there because of water flow.
And I don't know what it was last year when it rained six inches in an hour or whatever. And I appreciate, somebody did a really super job here with all this figures and, you know, if you looked at this sheet that tells you the runoff and everything, you know, yeah, figured if you couldn't dazzle them with your brakes, baffle them with your bull. So, I mean, I can't make a tale of that, but I do know the county has a little slide rule thing and you take 80 acres and figure the percentage of runoff, that's how big a culvert you put in.
We've got Mr. John Goff, the county engineer, in the back and I will be asking Mr. Goff some questions regarding the retention.
Anyway, that's, I'm kind of reiterating that what Brian said down here. And also Monty, or I mean, Kelly just skipped over that part about the roads. If you do top that road going off, Daisy Road on north, you're going to have a washout to draw, you're going to top the hill. Brian states in here, this is a blind corner. There's no kind of traffic control there. There's one hill coming off from the, going east and it just drops off into a dirt road. The other one, like you said, once you hit that intersection of Daisy and 1800, it's dirt this way, it's dirt that way. People invariably, like I said, with the carmen, shoot out them streets, they don't look, they don't look. They don't look what's ahead of them, they're just flying down the road. And then you're out there stuck. And that will happen also on Barn Road. And they think it's huge.
They call me, yeah.
Yeah. These people are, you know, they live in town and they, they go, oh, well, you know, everything's just nice and dandy, you know, I mean, they build all the subdivisions in Salina.
I think you all can make some money providing rural roads.
No, it's a big pain. It's a proverbial pain.
They tear up the roads and they...
And Dickinson County runs on a township basis, so we can't restrict people from driving down there. Sleen County runs on a county basis. So if you're out on the road and you get stuck and you tore that road up, you better have an address on that road or you're paying for that road grinner. We can't do that in Dickinson County, we just got to eat it, you know? And like they said, that Daisy Road from 1800 to 1700 just got traveled just because the grid went out. The other thing I'd like to reiterate is I think you've already been through this with Holland Creek Farms and Kelly touched on that, you've got two feedlots up there. And which would be north of Holland Creek Farms, which Dustin said, now we're having people sign a piece of paper saying, we realize we're in the country. But I don't know whatever happened though with that when they tried to sue Holland Creek Farms for the smell that came off their feedlot on 1400 Avenue and drifted across. One individual owned 40 or 60 acres there and he put his house there and his son wanted to move out there, so they put his house over there. And then the other one, another son come and they had three houses out there and he didn't like the smell. And I know Holland Creek Farms had to put some kind of chemicals in their retention ponds from the sewage or the waste of the cattle to keep the odor down. And they, to me, they should have been grandfathered in and had it. But you people should be aware of this, I don't know if you've been through that process or whatever. I guess that's the points I wanted to make and...
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, one other thing. Brad in here says that they're going to have a retention pond and they can use a dry well pump in case of a fire. Well, you know how fires are in the dry years and what can wipe out whatever. I really think, you know, you've got a six inch main going down 1700, you don't have to dump four inch main into those housing projects. If somebody wants to burn their pampas grass and it gets away and it lasts two or three years, the dry years we've had, you're not going to pull any water out of that pond. Somebody's house is going to burn. I think if you're going to go with this development, they ought to bring in at least a six inch because that's all they can get off 1700. But they ought to have a fire hydrant out there and not rely on a full retention pond. If anybody could tell me how long the pond's going to stay full of water, somebody's got one north of there that dries up every year. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Other comments? Yes, sir, please come up, God damn it.
I just have one simple question.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Terry Ingramanson, 346 1800 Avenue. And the only question I've got is, where's the fire department? We've just got one old tiny rural fire department on 1700 Avenue, about a half a mile off Daisy Road there. And so where's the fire department going to be out in order to take care of all this district out here? Because we have trouble with fires out there in the district or anything, you have to come out of Solomon. Or I think somebody said that they went to burn in Dixon County here a while back and the sheriff's department made a statement that Sleen County has a burn ban on so they couldn't burn over there where we're at. For some reason, I have no idea, I've checked into that, that we're the fire department.
Sleen County now has one, Sleen District.
Okay.
They've got their district.
They've got their district.
Further comments? I know, but they did.
I just want to make a few comments. I sit on Dixon County Rural Water District Number Two. Kevin Harris is our general editor. For years, we've had people come to us about getting on up in that area. I understand a new hydrologic, hydrologic study was done and I guess they feel like now it's available. I do know that there's a phase going in or they are proposing it, they have not let bids on it yet to, to increase water flow. But one of the problems is, is that that was, I've been off the board now almost five years and that Phase Three project was talked about to get done as soon as the debt was paid on the first initial for the Rural Water District. That was approximately three years ago now. It's almost four years before they're going to start anything with that. My concern is, is that, my understanding from them is that they look at it as, well, if we pay, get these 15 units paid for and we run into problem, we can build another pump station up there and use some existing pumps that they've got now out by Brown's Park. And I think that's just saying, well, if we have run into a problem, we'll try to fix it after the problem is. Well, what does that do to the existing water holders? Because they won't have pressure and it could take two years, three years. Because they won't have pressure and it could take two years, three years to get this all planned out and done. And so, I'm a little concerned on a couple of comments even Mike. And I respect Mike. He was an engineer when I was on the board. And he was the one that told us we couldn't put any more up there for years and years. But, you know, he said it's intended to someday run the water line to the north connected to 1800, but a four-inch line. Someday. I mean, it's not in the plan. It looks to me like this is the cart before the horse, a little bit on those waters. And if that does not, if that pond doesn't stay there, you know, for fire control, the Rural Water District has never allowed water, fire hydrants in. We don't have the ability to pump that pressure. You start putting fire hydrants in, you'll drain those towers like that. Fight a fire. What's that?
Most fire shirts have 10,000 gallon admitted pumps.
So.
And most six or under the lines can't handle the pressure.
Right. So, it's, that's the reasoning for that. But, so those are just concerns. I just bringing that from being on the, as chairman for four years on the Rural Water District and the concerns we've had up in that area. They're working to address them, but they're not, they're not complete. I mean, there's gonna be, take a lot more infrastructure that they don't have the money to do. And they're gonna have to go for some pretty hefty loans to try to solve some of those problems. Thank you.
Kevin, quick question for you. Since you were on the board and you're familiar with Mike, he's called me. And he was two years from there. He obviously worked with the Rural Water District for a while. What do you think's changed here in his report to us?
Well.
We weren't aware of the background as far as it seems so hard to get onto the Rural Water District. We were just aware of the information given to us. What do you think's changed for him to give us this letter saying, yeah, they can move on?
Talking to Patty, the district manager. They did a new hydraulic module. They finally completed it. They feel like it now that all those problems are not really existing. When we know that, we had complaints from people saying their water, you know, their pressure was low. We've got other parts of the system that have got pressure problems. I'm not standing up here against, totally against development. I don't want it to come across that way. I just, I would like to just basically say there's some concerns in that system. And until they address it completely and at one time in our discussions on the board to completely address all those problems that we see even west of where this development would go. We'd take another pump station and another water tower. And both of them have not been brought up at all, I don't believe, since I was on the board. So, I think what you're looking at is, is they're hoping that with the new hydraulic and some of the additions of the eight-inch line that they're gonna try to bring up closer to that and make a loop, which is what we did when we brought it across the Smoky Hill River Bridge, South area of Abilene. We made a double connection. That, they're hoping that that will solve everything. And, but I do know that they are storing these pumps. And if they need to, I guess they're saying they can put up another pump station. But they're not, it's not in the works right now. And they're looking, they also, the plan is, is with the money from the 15 is to build the pump station. That's what I'm suggesting.
Thank you.
I have a question, Kevin. With your experience on the board, on the water board, in a little background or history, has there ever been a time that the Rural Water District had put out a policy, I guess, that said you couldn't water any livestock because of those problems? Not that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of. We had some awfully large livestock producers. We had a dairy that could not use any well water and was using, that dairy no longer exists, but was using, we had two of them in fact, using a tremendous amount of water. That was not put out at that time. Expensive. At the gallons that they were using, very expensive to try to make that operation work. And if you, you know, the bottom line on that, the one dairy had absolutely no choice. Could not get a well anywhere that was workable with the quality of water to water dairy cows. But not that I'm aware of on that. I mean, we've never, we've never pushed our limit of the availability of water from the Abilene Water Treatment Plant as of yet. But there is a limit there. We just have never reached it. But there is a limit that we can pull out of that plant.
Was it before, after we got on with Abilene, that days that we could just water outside were staggered?
We've had days, we've gone into water warnings. You know, it's all based on Abilene's availability of water. If you live in Abilene, you know the restrictions that you here in Abilene have had because of their wells. Now, they've, they've taken a couple more wells online, my understanding. They've been able to solve some of those issues. But whatever restrictions that Abilene goes on, and Rural Water is divided by two, which was on in the last couple of dry years to where it was a, it wasn't a mandated. It was a voluntary, you know, but it was requested of us to shut down some of the water use if at all possible because of the, because of the conditions.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment?
Yeah, my name's Ray Coleman. I live 1783 Barn Road. And our farm is within a mile of the property to the west. We do have a small background feedlot about a mile west of there. And I know Jackson, the cattle business, you know, maybe. My question would be, why doesn't he put that next to this feedlot? There is cattle, so, you know. Put a development right by your cattle operation instead of by mine. See how that goes. But that's my concern is that when we have rain like this, sometimes it does smell. But then when it quits raining, it doesn't smell very bad at all. But people, people will complain about smells. Cattle industry is getting a lot of pressure from all kinds of animal activists. And that's, that's a concern. You know, just talk to any cattleman now, that's their concern, is animal activists. And so, that's a concern we have right there.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment?
John Maiden, Rural Abilene. I run the feedyard that James referred to, HCF. And I guess my comment would be reviewing the agriculture use notice. I don't think that would offer any protection for my operation. And I'm three, three and a half miles away, but I'm federally permitted. And I think that they could just go to a state regulator. And, you know, it's gonna, they'll probably smell Kelly's or Kurt and Ray's more than mine. But I think that if they wanted to cause trouble, and if they wanted to cause trouble for those guys too, I just don't, you know, it talks about generation of noise, dust, smoke and odors. But it doesn't refer specifically to where those come from. And it's just pretty general. And I don't think it would really offer much protection for the producers. And I don't like the idea of the precedent either. And it's just, I don't know. It's zoned agriculture and it's gonna be a complete change to 15 lots on that quarter section. And it's out, it's out in the middle of nowhere. And like Kelly said, it's a pretty intensive agriculture area. And you've got cattle feeders and grow yards from Solomon Clear to Hope in this county. And once you set that precedent, you're gonna open the door for anybody all the way through to do this sort of development. And you're gonna put all of those producers at risk. So, I just, I hope you consider that.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comments?
I have one more comment. I haven't had a chance to review this whole packet. But just looking at the drainage report from the engineer, the first line, second paragraph, so the current area is cultivated ground. And I'd challenge that. That's been no-till for, what, 20 years, Jack? I know a ground that I've no-tilled for ground that's been, has had zero tillage on it for, I've got some that's been 13 years at least. If the water runs off of that, it's much, much faster than the ground that is worked. And so, I would really, I would challenge the engineering study on that as to how fast the water will come off this quarter section. And I don't know if you have a map of the area. Yeah, right. Next one. The west side of the proposed deal, that all runs down to the west towards the ground farm and a waterway that runs then north. And once you get into that waterway, that waterway turns flat. And when the water runs off that, it comes out the field. I think Terry's seen it. We're seeing areas around there with no-till that we've seen water run that we've never seen, never seen before. Last year, and I asked Dad this, he's from Farm after we had that big rain. This isn't pertaining to Jack's. I mean, some of that water would have been, some of it would have been put up south. But we actually had water go over 1700 Avenue on our bridge. And Dad said his lifetime, he'd only seen water go up in about a foot and a half of the road. And it actually went over the road. And then the drainage off the southeast corner of that actually goes in front of Dan's house and crosses 1700 to the south and hits a waterway that comes down through the draw east of the farm. And I know last year after that rain, just by looking at the trash, that water was running approximately 360 foot line through there. That's how, that's how much water, water runs. I would really question the assumption that it's cultivated ground on that. Just, I don't think that ground's been worked for, what, 15 years, Jack? 15 to 20? So, that's the only question I had, only addition I had. Oh, yes, I have one more. I was the chairman of the Rural Water District Board for four years after Kevin. And to give you an idea of how fast the Rural Water District works, I went off the board in 2012. The last thing I did was sign the project to connect the East Abilene Crossing to the West Abilene Crossing. It's been two and a half years and we haven't turned a shovel full of dirt yet. So, if we create a problem with this many benefit units in one area, that problem's not gonna get solved overnight. Also, over time, there's supposed to have been a list kept of people wanting water, which got lost. We restarted the list. I think Dan was on that list for about eight years before he got water. I know there's houses, existing houses in that area and west that do not have rural water. I tried to go to a board meeting and suggested to the board that they make, Rural Water's always been on a first come, first served basis. I was shocked to read Mike Butler's report because anyplace else, when I was chairman of the board, he was very specific as to the number of meters that could be put on a particular line. I've never seen an open-ended statement such as this from Mike Butler. It's always been available on a first come, first served basis. I believe existing residences in that area should be allowed the opportunity, if the water is available, which I question this, should be allowed to have the rural water ahead of.
Can I ask Kelly a question? Kelly, since you were on the township, maybe you can answer this. Say they put that in over there, they put in the 15 lines and then our water pressure goes to nothing for rural water, where grab, which is north of there. Is it up to us to have to pay to put in a bigger? I mean, how would, how would we improve that?
Start complaining. And I think that's part of the issue is that that area was shut off for so long. The current board did not hear the pressure complaints because nothing changed for such a long period of time. People quit complaining. I think Dan, Dan lived a mile north of there. And what did you experience up there when you lived there, Dan?
When I built that house, I applied for a benefit unit and put it in. And if anybody down that road was running water at all, water would trickle out of my shower head, literally. Very, very, very little water.
Is that one of that problem?
It's a two-inch line.
How was that problem remedied?
I think it's just a two-inch line.
Do you still have that problem?
No, no. I sold that home in the early 2000s.
Does that home still have that problem? Do you know, was that problem remedied by anything from the water district?
Kelly, do you know Brian's having that problem still?
Brian Lang lives in that house now. And I asked Brian, he says, we get by. The operator of the district told me that his wife has complained that there's not enough water pressure there to run a shower and the washing machine at the same time. If she and the washing machine loaded clothes and there's someone in, they turn the shower on, the washing machine is shut off.
And it's got a good manifold system in it. I mean, it's not the plumbing in the house.
I guess what I was asking, because if we have a two-inch line and they have a four-inch line or something, you know, we, if we have to end up paying for a bigger line at some point because they put that in, I don't think that's quite fair to the homeowners that are there.
Can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, Linda Ingramanson, 346 1800 Avenue.
A rural water system, the age of the one out there is really not designed to handle subdivisions. When I touched on Mike's previous reports, it always be specific in the number of benefit units that you're allowed. I'll give you an example. South of Abilene out here, when Kevin said they tied on Brown's Home Deal, there was a Ken Haran addition, or the Haran addition out there. And I believe they bought seven benefit units. And that was over, that was in the early 2000s. It just happened when I came on the board.
It's right after we put up the precedent.
Yeah. And to date, I think they've only sold, used two or three of them, two of them, two and seven.
I think they just got another house.
They might. But my point is, there's been four benefit units that have been unable to be used by the public. He's basically held that for the, for that subdivision. And as you come around up 15, there's a lot of homes in there. Not all those are on rural water. About, I think, we sold the last available benefit unit in that area two and a half years ago. However, with that subdivision, there's four of them that are not being used. But they gotta account for that water being out of the system. So, if anybody along that area has a well built bad, there's not water available for them to bad.
And I, I did talk to Patty. They have allowed a few more on. And it's kind of interesting how they put it. We're putting a few more on and seeing if there's any issues.
Kind of too late. Kind of too late.
I mean, I was kind of surprised at that comment, but that's basically what she done. She said, we've gone ahead and put some people on who are on that list. And then we're gonna kind of watch that, see how the pressure goes, and then we'll go from there. I'm going, okay, we're, so even though all the engineering has been done, they still are in a little bit of question of whether pressure will hold or not.
Well, I think the engineers studied the song, Mike Butler. I think that's a two-inch line that runs past your house, Jack. And feeds back, goes on up Barn Road around Solomon. There's 34 houses there. And the engineer will tell us, we have no idea how they have pressure. What they do. The engineer has told me, he says, by the math, they shouldn't have water pressure. But they do. By the math, on 1800, they should have water pressure, but they don't. So, that's, that's all I had to add. But however, I would challenge the statement there, it's cultivated ground.
Thank you for your comments. Any final public comments?
Just one more thing on the, on the water district. When the water district went into 70s, it was to get basically rural people a quality water source. A lot of lines that were put in were two-inch lines because that was workable. A lot of lines that were put in were two-inch lines because that's all they needed at the time. They've got some. Being on the water district and going out with, with our. Repair chairman's position, basically supervisor or operator. In the years I was on the board replacing this line, it is just, you would be. The quality of the line all over this district, in a lot of places, is marginal best. When it was put in, it wasn't supervised quite right. The contractor used a different pipe. They, you know, didn't use the quality of pipe that was supposed to be put in, blah, 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 you go on and on. Kelly's been in holes, I've been in holes where Paco hits the line just slightly and bam, it cracks it way down the line. I mean, it, they're, they're working on replacing line as they can. Where they've got problems, they're spending the money to try to replace a maintenance line. But this, you know, it's not a system I would feel comfortable at least if I was still on the board to overlook.
Any final public comments?
I guess I'd make one other. I saw there's a note in there from the Sutherland School District. And therefore, you know, theirs is, they always like to have students, keep the students who still got out of school. But Chapman takes a lot of kids. Southeastly, you know, it's, it's not now anymore, you know, even if you live in that district, you can send your kid where you want to send him. So, I'm not putting much faith in what Sutherland thinks they're going to get out of their students.
Any other comments? Mr. Musset, would you like to address some of these concerns? Or would you like the, the board to ask questions? Would you like us to go ahead?
I, I appreciate all the comments that have been made and their concerns. You know, I, I think in our reports, everything was done by our engineering, our. We complied with everything that Dickinson County requested on. You know, they talked about the safety of leaving 1700. And we met with the county officials over there numerous times to see where the best place to put the driveway in. Daisy Road will not be a, it, it's not like people are going to go on Daisy Road. I think maybe possibly one or two driveways would be in there. I would assume, not doing anything in Dickinson County before, but I would assume they, they would rock the road up to the end of our development. And if, if we have to pay the township to do that, so be it. But the other concerns. I mean, the big concern was the water. And I, and we're getting a, a letter from, from the rural water district saying that, you know, everything's okay. And we, and we had our engineer design it also and look it over. And so, I know there's concerns, but you know, we're just saying that these are the, the elected officials, these are the people we pay for consulting to tell us that we're doing it right. I'll address anything else. The, you know, we don't know about, on our property, if there is a well water available. I, I guess that would be on the homeowners if they want to take the expense of drilling a well and they don't have good pressure. I mean, I've known a lot of people that have drilled wells and they've come up dry and they just move on.
There are terraces and waterways on this property currently, right?
Yeah, and, and Peter Earls had done, had the reports on, on, you know, he did.
I can also address the drainage report to a degree. John Goff has a copy of it, which he's overlooked. As far as the existing drainage issues, all over Dickinson counties, there's existing drainage issues. As far as, you know, the future total buildings and the future driveways, no matter if it's tilled land, cultivated land, if the whole thing was paved with concrete. You know, it's, because it's 161 acres, there's no, we're not, there's no adverse possessions to the drainage issues by the small amount of buildings and driveways that are proposed in this addition. So, I mean, if, if there's a situation that the road, the water goes over the road, it's going to go over the road the same as if there are no buildings out there. Then there are buildings out there.
Well, but the terraces and waterways will be taken out, right?
No.
No.
Okay.
I think David could address that for, I think most of our clients would probably want a walkout basement. Wouldn't that be more advantageous?
You know, I can understand the, the concern of, of the people who live in the country. I live in the country myself. I was involved in farming most of my life. We're not bringing in troublemakers. Most of these people that are interested in building in the country are people that have lived there in the past. And because of whatever reason, you know, they still want to live there. It's, it's not advantageous for them to be able to go out and buy 80 acres anymore and compete with the farmers on their, on their cost of their land. This, this puts them in an area, all these subdivisions out in the country. If you look around at some of them that are, that are out there. They, they work well with, in conjunction with the farmers. You know, the, most of the ones that I know in mine area, they don't, they don't cause any trouble. They don't compete with the farmers in buying, buying quarter section of ground, 80 acres. You have them in a, in an area where they can, they can do what they, their little projects, what they want to do. They can raise their cattle, they can, they can have their gardens. As far as, as far as the drainage goes. You know, the, the terraces have to be maintained. And when you put a house in, generally, we slow down the process of the runoff. And what happens, what happens down the road, you crosses the road, you know, that's going to happen. We get rains like we, like we just had. And, you know, it's something we, we can't predict that anyway. We can't predict the drought, we can't predict the rainfall. But we maintain the terraces on, on a piece of property like this and, and the water flow.
Dan Sexton, 405 1700 Avenue. So you tend to be have buyers. So you have zero buyers until you close. So you don't know who is going to buy that piece of property.
Someone with enough money to buy it.
Exactly, the highest bidder, okay? You have no idea who's going to buy that property though. You cannot say that they're going to be, they're going to do. Once you sell it to them, it's theirs. You have covenants, but those are always can be tweaked.
Well, the covenants have to be honored. They, they have to be honored.
Until they have a majority.
You know.
Until you're out of it.
The whole thing, the same thing applies with, with anyone buying property. But once they own that property, that's their property.
Exactly.
They, they.
I have a well.
Right.
Okay? Kelly has a well. Jim has a well. He has a well. You, if, if those 15 people decide they want to water their horse, if they put it there, or their steer, if they have one, for their kids to be in 4H. And do the things that people do out in the country. You have 15 wells they're going to punch because they're not going to want to pay the price per gallon for water out there. Our water supply is going to go to nothing.
Well, not necessarily. You know, I live on Kip Road, I live at 1972 South Kip Road. I live in a section where I have lived off of well water since we built the house 25 years ago.
And that's also low lying ground.
Not necessarily there, no. We, we always called that piece of ground, that 80 acres there, hill ground. Because we lived on the bottom on Jukeson Creek. Okay? We dug a well, taken a chance on that property 25 years ago, and we hit good water. Anyplace else in that section has nothing. And, you know, we didn't know that, you don't know that. They, they can hit a, they can hit a different vein, you don't know where those veins run.
Veins run north and, north and east, east and west and north and south.
Right.
And I know when Kelly's pulling for irrigation, I have a softener with a filter on it and it pulls it every time.
Well, sometimes those veins drop, they're not on the same one. What I'm saying is, I'm living in a, at a house that has a good well. My neighbor right across the fence had a good well way back when they used to, it was a hand-dug well. Anything beyond that for, for probably two miles had nothing. So, you know, we're just guessing, we're all just guessing on, on the effect of, of well water and, and somebody pulling out of, out of the ground.
We don't have an aquifer under us.
Houses generally.
We don't have an aquifer under us.
Well, I don't either. All I can, all I can speak of is my own experience. Homes generally don't pull that much water anywhere. They do have a water system, they're on the water system. You know, like Jack said, all we can do is, is go off of the experts. We can't sit around here and guess about it.
The expert, the experts that 10 years ago said that our rural water will not handle any more units. The same expert that said that, right?
I don't know, I don't know.
Yep, it is. Questions from the board?
Well, not, not from those folks at this time. I'd like to ask John a few questions when we have the opportunity. Can we do that now?
Yep. I knew you weren't going to get out of it, John.
Close the door.
You should've run way sooner than this.
Long time ago. I've sat here and listened to all of the information that's here. And I guess I want to start with, in Dickinson County, as in everywhere else, there's two sides to every story. One side is improvement, growth. The other side is protecting the folks that are already here. And I guess I need to say thank you to the five of you folks that are up there going to make the beginnings of this decision. Good luck. As far as the storm drainage with the information that I've heard here today. I do have a meeting with Mr. Earls tomorrow. And it is my intention to visit with him about the storm drainage report that he provided. The information that he provided is accurate, the way it is written. If there's more information to be seen, I'd like to see it and visit with him about it. Particularly the draw, the pictures that you have, I'd like to go with that. What I'd like to do is characterize his report as, if you had, I'm going to just use this example, one gallon per minute out there and it's causing flooding. According to his report, he's lowering that to 95% of a gallon per minute. And what I'm here to tell you today is, is 95%, you're still going to have flooding that's out there. But I would appreciate the opportunity, Dustin, to visit with the township board and talk about the drainage and the flooding that is happening as far as the township board is concerned. We do need to decide what level is, well, acceptable's not the right word. Appropriate may not be the right word. But we do need to have a discussion on what things are and where they should be. As far as the traffic out there is concerned, our Roden Bridge Superintendent has been out and looked at the locations that are there. And the entrance and exits of these locations have been moved. Now comes the big if, folks. Turning around and looking at the one on 1700, you'll notice that that road does not come straight out, but is bent to the west. It was purposely moved there because it used to come straight out. And what was found upon investigation by our Roden Bridge Superintendent and the developer's engineer was that, yes, that was too close. To the top of the hill and there was the most likelihood of a problem with crashes at that intersection. The if that goes along with that is, is based on if the people out there are driving the speed limit that they're supposed to be driving. If they're not, the rock trucks don't.
They go by tighter time, every morning, every day, all day.
Do, do you have any recourse to take care of that?
I don't, I don't work for the sheriff, but if I did, I'd be out there.
Have you made the phone call to the sheriff?
Yep, oh yeah.
And your response was?
That road is so heavily traveled with police officers all, all day long and doesn't stop.
The rock trucks coming out of Chappell Quarry right now.
Okay.
Or 1400.
But the solution is to call the sheriff if they're speeding, is that correct?
How did that work on 1400 with the Dust Bowl?
Is that correct? Folks, I can't help what the sheriff does.
I just, I just tell you, that's what happened.
I have a question. When that study's done, okay, it's based off of 55 mile an hour, right?
Right.
Sheriff's not going to stop, you go with 60. He's not, they're not stopping him at 60, I know that. That's what I'm saying. That's why I wondered if they did the study at 55 or if they did it at a higher rate.
Well, there is a safety factor built into that that will get you above the 55s. But what I'm saying to you folks is, the law's the law. All we can do on our end of it is say, this developer has met the law. Now, I didn't say it was good, I'm not saying it's bad. But in some cases, exactly what's happening here is what you folks have to do, is stand up and say, here's the problem. Dustin, can I make a suggestion here?
You get the floor.
Folks, how many of you would like to see the sheriff write some tickets out there?
They do, I see them stopping cars all the time.
One, two, three, four, five, six. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Okay, I got six yeses out of 15 folks. I don't know where that, what that tells the sheriff, but we'll be happy to pass that on to him.
If it was more populated, you would have more.
All I can say is, folks, number one, I'll check on the storm drainage further. I understand your concern about the speed limit on the road. I'll check with that on our engineering studies on places to get in and out, off of that subdivision.
John, you said that you've already, you've already had to move the entrance once and you're.
I can actually pull up the old one if you like.
You and Martin have reviewed that and are recording the traffic study right now.
What I said was, Martin has been out there with Mr. Earls. And they came to this conclusion and that's been recorded.
So is the entrance now on the west side of the hill, the east side of the hill? I can't quite picture it.
The top of the hill is here.
Okay, gotcha.
Towards the block.
Okay.
Now, I don't know that I've answered your questions. And Wally, you said you had a question. So probably not one that I answered.
All good, all good points. You just said you'd reviewed the drainage study and find it meets the regulations as accepted. You've also said that you wanted to meet with Mr. Earls again and if there's any other information that needs to be disclosed, you would, you would be open to that.
Certainly.
Because there seems to be some, we got, I guess you could say the professionals saying it does. And we got some people that are saying, we don't know that it does.
Well, what I'm hearing here today is there is a drainage problem out there today, right now. And if that issue, that drainage problem goes up a little bit, or a lot, you still have that drainage problem. What I'm saying is, if that drainage goes down just a little, you still have that drainage problem. That's the reason I want to visit with the township board and determine what they feel like is appropriate. Of course, Martin, Roden Bridge Superintendent on the highway, we'll be looking at him as far as what he feels like is important. As far as drainage is concerned, but mostly the water doesn't come to 1700 Avenue. Martin will have very little input in the drainage.
Excuse me, what was that again? You said the water does not come to 1700 Avenue?
Very little of it does, except on this corner.
My corner, right here? This was after an inch and a half of rain yesterday morning. Okay? When it had three inches, it was coming over the top of Daisy Road.
Okay. I, I understand.
How many gallons of water you think that is? That's more than a little.
All right. That, that is at the intersection with Daisy Road and 1700. Is that correct?
That is correct. Right down my ditch.
Okay.
And then it crossed, crossed underneath the road in three foot culverts that were full. When it was running three inches, when we had three, it's a three inch terrain, right across my ground, washing it out.
Okay. I'll be happy to visit with the township board on the culvert sizes there and what they feel like is appropriate, as well as with Martin on the culvert sizes that are there.
There's no terraces coming down that hill, no, on that side, on that side.
Okay. We'll look at it. I do have a question. Who owns the property on the south side of 1700 on the east side of Daisy?
Me.
East side of, oh, you did.
East side.
South side on the east.
South side of 1700, east of Daisy. Larger culverts will increase the amount of flow coming to that property.
They have terraces on their ground, it wouldn't have that problem.
Folks, I'd appreciate if you'd write in the, your information, what he just said about terraces, because terraces do help.
John or Earl, planning commission. Main, the comment is that the people won't take the terraces out, they'll leave them existing. And I've seen that flat map. Is there a map available with the existing terraces on there to show the board exactly how many terraces are on that hill? I have an old one from back in the 80s. And you start looking at how close those terraces are together, I'm not sure I'm gonna buy that they're not gonna take terraces out to put in a house or a garage, I'm pretty sure. And if you look across the road, the issue that Dan's talking about, directly south of that, that owns up 40 acres. And we have a terrace quite, to me, it seems like there's a steeper slope on the north side and on the south side, and we had to put a terrace in on the south side. But I know this is an old ASCS map from the mid 90s, but I think it may be helpful for the planning commission if they overlay that flat on the existing terraces.
Okay. Just as information, the terraces are shown on contours that are there, but they are exceedingly difficult to understand or interpret. My note that I just made is to ask your engineer to provide us a map showing where the terraces are for this board's information.
Dustin, isn't there something in our regs that if any changes are made to terraces or waterways that were in any way paid for through government funds like NRCS, that there has to be?
It's actually what, what Mr. Lang is referring to.
Oh, okay.
When they, when they take that information, they'll have to do a drainage study and send that to the state, and the state has to approve the changes that they're making, because they're also-
You're talking about individual law owners once they-
No, not the developer. Before we can approve anything, because they're gonna disturb more than an acre of ground, they have to send all the drainage report and studies and how they're gonna mitigate that drainage on top of what we talked about to the township board. They've gotta send all that to the state for the state to approve.
Okay. I think we need to make exceedingly clear that one acre business. Mr. Lang's letter in here, his statement about construction area is correct. When you build and you disturb and have nothing on it but loose soil, if you're more than one acre, then yes, you are required to do all of those things. Put together the report, get it to the state, get the permit, put up the black silt fence, get out there at least every two weeks and after every half inch storm, and fill out the paperwork. Now, is that enforced by EPA at this level? No. Far as I know, the county doesn't have any enforcement to take care of that either. Is that, have they given you something new I don't know about?
No, we, that's, we rely on the fact that the state's permitted it at-
Okay.
At the level, if they say that the state's okay with it, and we get that state permit, that's what we put on record because they're the regulatory board.
Now, if I may ask, your house builder, about in dimensions of feet, how much ground do you tear up to build a house?
Generally, you could figure 100 by 100.
About a quarter of an acre.
Probably, yeah.
What that means is, they will not be required to put together the information and send it to the state, one lot by one lot by one lot, because they've only got a quarter of an acre.
The only thing they'll have to do is for the road.
The only thing what?
They'll, they'll have to do it for the road that they put it.
Yes.
Road or ditch and pond, and if they disturb the terraces, if they disturb the terrace level and want the house.
I'm not familiar with that regulation. These folks are, and Dustin is.
If the, if they, when it comes to the disturbing of an acre, or if the developer disturbs the acre for the road, they'll have to do that. If the contractor disturbs the road on a federally paid for terrace, or disturbs a federally paid for terrace to build the house, they have to do it for that. They have to get the permission for that. Pass there, if they're only disturbing a quarter of an acre from the house itself, they don't have to do a drainage study for that quarter acre. But they will have to do one for the road and how that affects the runoff. And they'll have to do one for the pond, assuming, you know, which they've kind of already done. That's part of what they've gotten to.
So, you see that, that little line right to the corner?
Yeah.
That is actually a, a natural runoff. It is making a ditch right there.
Right. So, well, that's what I mean, is when they do this road, they'll have to incorporate whatever runs across with the road. And so, you've got, you've got where it goes from one side of the hill to the backside of the hill, they'll have to incorporate that. And when we talk to the township board about the drainage issues on that corner, that's when we get the, the rules.
Kelly give you a picture there?
No, I, I actually need a copy of it for those that I can put in the notes.
And if you could make a copy of that, I'd appreciate it for the meeting I have tomorrow.
And that was after one and a half inch. The, the three inch was over, over Daisy Road.
Okay.
John, clarify, clarify for me, you know, we're talking about storm drainage, we're talking about, we already have an issue in the area. But what we're interested in, I mean, we're not asking the developer to come in and fix that existing storm drainage issue. We're asking him if this is approved to come in and not exacerbate that issue or report or something, correct?
You said it very well. Let me say exactly the same thing in different words.
More confusing words.
Probably. If right now you've got 10 gallons a minute running off of there at an inch and a half, and I know 10 gallons is silly, but I'm using it as an example. And this subdivision, and you have a problem there. If this subdivision only puts off nine or nine and a half gallons per minute, you're still gonna have the same problem. It's still gonna be there. If this subdivision puts off 10 and a half gallons a minute, or 11 gallons per minute, then by our regulations, the subdivider is obligated to take care of only the extra half a gallon or the extra gallon and a half. He's not obligated to change the existing condition. That's what the law says. That's why I want to visit with the township board, to find out what they want as far as their roads are concerned, because theirs are the ones that are being crossed. Probably more confusing, sorry.
No, I understand it fine. So, you've reviewed the submitted storm drainage report, and from what, you said from what was submitted, you think it looks okay. But you've got some additional concerns now, based on the information you've got.
Correct.
Am I directing that? Okay.
Folks, I'll be around here. If anybody wants to visit, they're welcome.
Do we have any more questions for John? Board, questions?
I have questions. We have no idea who directed them.
We'll throw them out there and we'll see what we can do.
I gotta tell you, Dustin, the thing with the wells does kind of concern me. You've caught 15 wells down there. You're relying on people not being crazy. Where I live, there's a neighbor right next to me that during the drought, I'd go out to take care of the dogs at 9:00 o'clock at night, and his sprinklers be on. When I went back out again at 7:30 in the morning, they were still on. I can't do anything about that. It's his well. It's everyone's water. Is there any way to say, okay, in this 160 acres, you guys can put down two wells, you share them, so you don't have somebody doing something, for example?
The short answer is no.
Okay.
The long answer is, if the HOA determines that they can't, that nobody on their private, on, on, understand the HOA is basically your governing body for the civil area, on anything that would pass what we have for urban county regulations. So, you know, when we say, to put up a building, you have to have these standards, the HOA can say, and you have to have a paint grade. Okay? So, the HOA can go in and say, we don't want private wells. Nobody can dig a private well. The HOA can give you that. We can't, you know, the only thing that they can, because people on the water right somewhere though, the HOA can go in and say, but on this area, to live in this area, you can, we can, aside from that, we can't rate it.
And the problem with that is, if the HOA does that, and then five years down the road, they change the regulations.
They could put it on, they could put it on the plat, so that it's, so that it's permanent. They can say, as part of this, you know, as part of this plat, you know, they're gonna have to move it and be called private wells, uh, as per the HOA. They can, there, there are some things they can do to make it longer lasting.
Yeah.
As it comes, but it is possible only through the HOA.
Okay.
Well, I, I'll tell you where my focus is. There's something that's not beating the surface here. Because we've got people, if I'm hearing correctly, we've got people that's lived there for years, they can't get on the rural water, and yet we got a new subdivision that's, that's being talked, and yeah, we can get, we can get everybody on. Something's not cohesive here. And, and I don't know where to point that. I mean, we got an engineer report that says, we got plenty of water. If you got plenty of water, why aren't people on?
Because for 10 years, we were totally good.
And, and I don't, I don't want to detract from that at all, because, and Kelly and I have talked about this on fire. However, as far as the planning commission is concerned, the water district has said there is water. They have met the legal requirement as for the county for building houses. Does that mean that, that their report is legitimate? We can't decide that. That's between the people and the engineer of the water district. So, though I completely agree, because of, you know, my parents live out there, they're on rural water, so I know some of the issues. I don't know, because we've had to boil water before, because some of the four and a half miles away is a pipe, so I understand. But as for the legal requirement, rural water has said they have water. And that's why I requested the email from the engineer as well, because I wanted something substantially where they got that information. I requested that from the rural water district, and they provided that to me. So, yes, I understand what's concerned, but we also have to look at it from the fact that rural water says they have water.
So, there isn't any way to ask, ask them again, ask them in detail? You know, I have it right, right, right down here, but I understand the position we're in, and I hope the public does as well. You know, we ask for the, the, you know, the certain requirements to file for plaques and, and, you know, to come in front of our board, and it's not our job to second guess the experts and to second guess our staff.
But can we ask for additional reports?
Ask them what has been done to fix why we couldn't 10 years ago, and for all those years, now all of a sudden, we can't when nothing has changed.
Can we ask them to address some of these concerns, just that we'd like to maybe have their engineers come in front of us, or do we have that, is that in our program?
We can certainly ask, but if they don't answer, as far as we're concerned, they've said that they have water.
They've, they've met our requirements.
Because, and that's kind of what I asked for. I said, you know, can I have the engineering report on this, or something from the engineer that says, this is, you know, why you guys have water. And that's what I got. And so, as far, as far as that's concerned, rural water says they have water. Why, what's changed, we can't dictate that, we can't issue, you know. As much as I'd like to, you know, say that we could, you can more than, we can certainly, and I can, and I will certainly try to give them information.
We can ask what we can require, and Jack's met his requirements in submitting their response to him to us.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Correct. So, I can most certainly request more information, and, and I will probably get as much as I can. I can ferret out information pretty well. But as far as the legal requirement goes, rural water says they have water.
Yeah, Jim. Just one last comment. Would, nobody really addressed the area or the report about the odor. I know John made, made his statement, and our two cattle producers made their statement. If they, if people move into this addition and they complain about the odor coming off any kind of a cattle operation, even as far as Holland Creek Farms is three miles away, then are these people gonna, you know, somebody's gonna force these people to make the changes. Another thing I was saying is, if Mr. Cosette's side of those things, he goes ahead with the development, and they can't produce the water to do it. I, I argued with the assessor here in Dickinson County, when they assessed my home, and he said it's worth $150,000. And I said, does anything in your assessment report have anything to do with whether you've got water on that property? And they said, well, no, we don't think about that. And I said, how many people are gonna buy a $200,000, $150,000, $200,000 house so they can haul water to it? And so, I know his sister-in-law, damn it, she's an anesthesiologist. I think if he built all those homes up there and they didn't get the water, I think I'd be looking for her for a little tussle call me. I'd feel pretty sorry for him, really honestly. So, I think it'd be, it'd better fit, better all the parties here to make sure that the engineers in that water district are telling you this story.
For both sides.
For both sides.
One, one thing, and I've just reread Mike's letter down here, and I think you need to pay attention to what it, down at the bottom. And I think that's the person you bring in here. You need more information. Try to get Mike Butler, who's the engineer of that district, to, to come in. But he says, if road then exceeds the constant pressure pumps, these pumps could be replaced with fixed pumps directed to a new water tower. Now, that's an infrastructure they're not even talking about. They would have to go back to rural development and all this, and go through another note process, which is, what I understand has held up this last deal because of all the red tape paperwork that's been, but it basically says to fix it is to go to a new water tower, which I know that, because that's what we discussed years ago, sitting there, if we were gonna fix this problem. This is, Mike told us, to fix this, this is what you would have to do, completely solve the problem in that area. And that was to put up a tower, put up another pump station. So, he's saying that right there. What they're changed is, is the bot, the, the height, the, the study they ran, the new study they ran, he's looking at the new study they just ran and said, well, the new study says we don't have a problem. But nothing's changed.
When they say should, that doesn't mean will.
It's a big if.
That's an if, or.
And they're also going to have a six inch water line where we all have what?
But they talk about making the loop coming off 1700 and picking up 1800.
Well, loops will help.
Well, we, we have nothing.
That's what I'm saying. He's saying, he's saying it should.
Right.
And that is a, that's flip the coin. It should land on heads.
And, and like I said, I completely, as far, as far as county's breaking areas, I completely understand and agree with that. The water district says they have water. And that's, and that's the focus that we, as the, or well, them as the board, and, and I as the regulatory board. Because if somebody was to come in to me and say, let's, let's say Jack's went for one council, and he came in and said, you know, I wanna put a house here, and he, and I said, okay, well, then I have to do it for every single home that goes up in the county. I need proof that you have water. Either a well report showing how the water's coming in where it is, that, you know, like a fresh dug, whatever. And if he comes to me and is with a letter that says, rural water, you know, rural water says I have a pump, I have to okay that. And then if later he doesn't, as much as I hate to sound like this is shoving it off, that's between him and the water district and them. And what I know that that means is that this also now means that it's between him, the other customers around him who no longer have a lot of pressure. And I understand that, and I don't want that to look like I'm trying to lay that out, because I completely understand that issue. The problem is, this board can only decide on what we're given here. And legally, rural water district says they have water. How they determine who's got available water out there, we can't question.
You can't question?
We can't, we can't question. We can ask for more information.
We can table it for further discussion, more information.
You know, I don't know the price of the houses they're building, wanna build up there, but if I wanna sell my house for $200,000 or $175,000, but I have no water pressure, am I gonna get that after I've put all this into a house, and build a new house down there? No. But the people up the hill will.
At the end of the day, what Dustin's saying, and I think the, you know, I'm not gonna speak for everybody on the board, but I'll tell you, I also share the concerns about water availability. You know, I, I came tonight thinking that a lot of- You know, I, I came tonight thinking that a lot of what I was going to hear were going to be, you talked a little bit about the smell issue, and that's a real issue. I'm not sweeping that on the table, but that's a little bit of a gray area issue that, you know, we, we really can't base a decision on, you know?
Well, I have a question.
Well, let me finish my statement, please. You know, and I thought a lot of what I was going to hear was, well, this is a rural area, and yes, it is, and we don't want to change the character of the community. I understand that. We're also needing to follow the, the Dickinson County comprehensive plan. And in our comprehensive plan, what the county has stated, and what our job as a planning commissioner to do is not only to uphold our regulations, but to also follow our comprehensive plan. And one of the things in our comprehensive plan is looking for development off of, you know, blacktop roads, you know, not off of dirt roads, you know, places in the county where we can grow. Because you folks know, tax dollars, it's either going to come from you individually or it's going to come from, from development. So, that's the only place we get tax revenue, you know? And I thought I was going to hear a lot of just, to the community and, and things like that. But what I'm hearing tonight are some real concerns about where we're going to get water, if you're going to have water. I mean, because, let's face it, change is going to happen. More people are moving out rural, we know that. But as a planning commissioner, I'd like to be able to make sure as much as we can in our purview, that the facilities that they need to actually build out there are going to be there. And we're not just, just talking about, you know, the changing of, of, you know, more people are moving rural. That's not what we're talking, talking about tonight. What we're talking about are real concerns and due diligence, and I commend the county staff and, and Jack. I mean, you jumped through all the groups in Dickinson County as Ashley did. But, but I have real concerns on the information that we can get. You know, Dan talked about tabling this issue tonight, so we get a little bit more information. My thoughts are to ask, granted, you know, rural water may just say, the water's there. And us as planning commissioners have to take their word for it. If Jack has, has done his due diligence and asked if there's going to be water there, and the experts say yes, we've got to be able to take that as a yes. Now, you folks who are on the rural water district, you need to be talking to your representatives, and you need to be able to go talk to your board. And you need to be asking the right people of those questions. We obviously can't answer the questions about water availability. What we can do, or at least what I suggest we do, is ask, see if we can ask one more time and maybe visit with, with Mike Butler from Schwab and Eaton, because I do have some questions. The other thing is, John has some questions about the storm drainage. And so, I think maybe the responsible thing tonight is to lay out some questions, some more information that we expect to see, and, and table this issue tonight until we get more information. Because I don't feel comfortable making the decision tonight, because I've got, you know, I'm uncomfortable with a few things.
Something that we need to believe about is also in the day, because, correct me if I'm wrong, rural water, their board meetings are the same night.
It's tonight.
We have a question, and it kind of pertains to what you were talking about. So, if, if you okayed this, is this a change in direction? Is this a change in policy, a past policy in this county? I mean, we've talked about details, but is this a change? Is this set in a precedent?
I think, in my opinion, I've, I've been on the planning board for almost 20 years, so a little background. I think each application stands on its own merits. I mean, you know, you might have one, you may have one subdivision, and, and it's totally, it's a still subdivision, but it's totally different from this one over here based on a whole bunch of criteria and, and what is and what isn't.
Okay. I was just, I didn't know if we were looking at a major change.
It's not like, well, we passed this, and so we have to pass this, and so we have to, no, each one stands on its own merits.
Okay. We would, to, to give you an example of how that would have to happen, we would have to take all the criteria we've gathered and any information, and if the county committee, you know, let's say this passes preliminary, and then passes final, and then passes county. What we would have to do in order to make it a, uh, I just lost a word. Precedent, thank you. To make it a precedent, we would have to actually change the regulations to say, oh, and by the way, if you have all of this, you can just do it. And, and to give you an example, if Kelly could come in here and said, I want to put this up just half mile from where it is, it's a completely different zoning area because it's past half mile from the paved road. And so, I, I would have flat said, no. Because that, it doesn't meet the criteria for what we consider development. So, every, what we have is we have two, basically, two different major zonings of the county. We have what we call Ag eighty and Ag forty. Ag forty is anything within half mile of the paved road. Ag eighty is everything past that half mile mark. And so, our development areas run along paved roads, and those also need to be dictated by the availability of school districts, water, stuff like that. Because this up in the, up by, up by you, up in northeast, there's not more water.
There is.
And so, so even if they did this on a paved road, they'd have to somehow make sure that they have public water.
For all fifteen?
For all fifteen. If they were doing this exact same thing up by where Wally lives, they'd have to make sure they have public water for all fifteen, so.
I have a question on part of the paved road situation. We just endured a country club, shoulder on a country club for, it's supposed to be a 90-day project, but it had kind of run about winter. My wife forces stack care, she drives that every day, so she got to go on the sand all the time. So, starting with developments like this, is that, is the county going to need to do that? I heard that it was going to come a little farther out, maybe they've done mine with that shoulder. Will that be coming into Dickinson County with a bigger shoulder?
It, it would be, it would be based on traffic studies and stuff like that. But the, you know, and then, as I said earlier, with the, you know, the, just because it's off a paved road, doesn't mean that, you know, because we know how many dirt roads intersect with paved road. So, they'd still have to talk to township board to get, you know, gravel on that side of roads and stuff like that. So, there's a lot to every single one of these cases. Fifteen will do at least thirty cars to get on their, their, their.
For myself, I've, I guess I question if we should even table this. It seems to me like we've heard enough negatives tonight that I don't know that we need to even pursue it. I know that, that there's the comprehensive plan, I know that, you know, we want growth in Dickinson County, but I think sometimes we have to look at what expense. And, and Mr. Cosette, I know that you said you don't want to, you never want to do anything negatively to impact us, and you want to, at all, to remain agricultural. And that's, that's a nice thing to say, but if you put 15 houses on there, you're not remaining agricultural, at least not as we in rural Dickinson County would define it. And I know, you know, from comments here, you, you kind of have some things working against you already because of things that we have experienced in Dickinson County here as farmers and ranchers, when, with people that, nice people that have moved into our area with, oh, we're, we're going to love it out here, you know, clean air, you know, it's great in the country, and I would agree with that. But they have caused us a lot of problems because they don't like the smells. We've had notes left in our tractor saying, why are you making so much noise during the night? We've had, there have been complaints about cornstalks in yards. We had, we had trouble getting, um, we're the only ones on our section, and we had trouble getting permit for, to build two more cattle pens because of people that had moved in and wrote nasty letters about us to KDHE. And they're nice people, but they cause terrific problems. John Maiden sat right here. His, his feedlot was reduced to half capacity because of someone that moved into the area. And so, you know, we, there's this thing that you want people to sign, and that's great, you know, people, you know, that's a good start. And what we have people looking at, it's a good start, but it's no guarantee that this isn't going to happen again. And when we, when we hear neighbors and people out here that have, I mean, these people have been here for generations. They aren't, they aren't just fly-by-night people, and I'm not calling you fly-by-night, I don't mean to say that. They aren't just people who said, oh, here's a nice place to live, this looks like a good investment, and, oh, I think maybe there's going to be some economic, financially economic progress here. I think I'll ask if we can have a subdivision. No, these are people who have withstood the storms of farming and ranching for years, and they want to be able to pass that on to their kids and their grandkids. And we're just, we're, for a nice term, we're a little skittish about having people move in that might.
When you say we, who are you referring to?
I'm talking about a lot of cattle owners in Dickinson County. I'm talking about a lot of farmers in Dickinson County. We're good people, but, you know, I, I just really think, you know, in our, in our regs here, it says that we are to consider the regs, and we're to consider the, what the comments of the people are that, whose land borders them, kind of equal. And when we don't have one landowner around them saying, go for it, this is a good idea, I guess I'm not sure that we need to pursue it any further.
My opinion is we need to, to make this decision based on regulations and leave the emotion out of it. And I understand your emotion, and I'm not trying to discount your feelings or anyone else's, but we have to look at both sides of the coin. And, and that's why I am of, of the opinion that we shouldn't make a decision tonight, that we should table it for further study. There's so many things that we need answers to. I mean, I don't want to immediately say no to this person, and I don't want to immediately say yes. I really think we need to weigh everything that has been brought before us and get those answers. But that's my personal opinion as a businessperson, because I see it on both sides. This is going to bring tax dollars to our county. You, you folks as farmers, you create a lot of stuff for our county as well, but I really think we need more information, is my opinion.
Is there some way we could find out what the difference in tax base would be?
Twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three percent?
Agricultural in Dickinson County accounts for twenty-three percent of the tax base.
Okay.
If 15 homes came in, every hundred, or every $400,000 value equals $8,000 in cash in hand tax dollars.
Okay.
Done the math.
Now, is that based on all of the county?
No, that's based, that's, that's, that's based on Garfield Township.
Okay.
That's based on the middle of it, Garfield Township. Every $400,000 value is $8,000 cash in hand.
Okay.
Which translates to every $100,000 is roughly $2,000 cash in hand. Now, that's entire tax base, that's not what goes directly to the township, that's to the school district, to the township, to, you know, the county tax base.
I think in our township, exact same question game, and I think it equated to what township shares. Like you said, that's for everybody. I think it was about, not quite $300. Because the county gets a share, the household gets a share, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Bollis, you, you had mentioned that, that the surrounding landlords, the surrounding landlords, you, you were supposed to listen to, to their, uh, between Monty Fink, myself, and, and the dog farm, or the, who owns the water way down through there now?
Is it?
Or?
It's.
The impact of the runoff and, and the, to farm ground, washing out crops, to running across the field, washing out crops already is bad because of, and no tariffs on the east side, you can see that ditch forming down through there. It's already bad. You get a farm, every one of them guys would probably put up more than a building. Okay? At sixty by forty, there's 2,400 square foot, at least without the overhangs. Every one of them will probably put up at least, as they say in their deal, a two to three thousand square foot house. The rooftop's alone, coming across the ground, it's not going to have any crops on it, it's meat grass, that water's still going to run.
I have a question. Based on what I'm hearing from the board, more information. If we schedule another meeting, and I heard you say that preferably not on the same night as the Water District.
Right, and they, they happen to have them with their boards on the same day.
Can we have Mike Butler here? Can he answer, say again? Well, I mean, I find it kind of hard for an engineer to say, it's too bad I gave you my letter, but, but, I mean, you know, the rural water district.
I think the water district can request him to come. That's what they would have the.
I, I have to request the rural water district to provide somebody to be at the meeting to discuss their decision.
Okay.
Well, there seem to be a lot of questions about his letter, and he was here that addressed a lot of that.
Well, again, you know, we've talked with John about storm drainage, you know, I, I would like some more clarification about storm drainage. Now, we understand you've got a problem there, and as John had said earlier, there is an existing problem there that Mr. Cosette's responsibility is not to exacerbate that problem. It's not his job to fix that drainage problem, none of that's what the county and the township right now to, to look at that problem. Our job is to make sure, the county's job is to make sure, you know, if this is approved, that that doesn't exacerbate the problem. You guys already have a problem there, that's not his fault. His responsibility and his subdivision, his development is to make sure that that problem doesn't get worse. And I think we've got some questions as to the storm drainage report that was submitted, whether or not, you know, cultivated, uncultivated, you know, John's got some questions, you know, that's one reason I think to table it tonight. Our job as planning commissioners is to balance, you know, I know, you know, out of respect to Amita, I, I understand, and all the landowners here understand that, you know, I mean, we obviously need to listen to all your opinions, and I think we have tonight, but, you know, at the end of the day, you know, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, because we've all got some questions and concerns, but just because all the adjacent landowners are against something, doesn't make it bad. And, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on what side of the fence you're on, this is the United States of America, and you own a piece of property. Just because people around you don't like something, if it meets all regulations, we can't tell you no, just because we don't like something you do on your land.
Did it, John Maiden?
If, if it meets all regulations.
They did it, John Maiden?
They did it.
We didn't.
They had to go through the state VBA.
Exactly. I mean, we didn't, the county didn't, that was state and federal issue.
But the county opened the door for this path, by, let this man put it on, let the next owner go in, let the next.
Folks, we're going to face this in the future.
It's true.
I mean, we are. And, you know, if, whether or not we decide to approve or disapprove in time, we've not come to a decision.
And we're not making a decision.
We're not making the decision tonight, as far as I can hear from the board. But, you know.
I would ask.
We're going to face this issue in the future, whether or not we decide to turn this one down, there's going to be more in front of us, so.
The county used to not own, I'm sorry. I would just like to, to make comment on Jim's statement about, you know, let him put a house here, another house here. That's why we're here tonight, because, because of that situation, we created regulation that a lot of people are happy with, because somebody comes to us and goes, I'd like to split my land to give to my son, I'd like to split my land to give to my kids. Well, you got to go through this process now, because of that exact situation. So, we have to look at it from that aspect, too. Yes, at the time, we didn't have anything in place to prevent a house and a house and a house and a house on, on 68 there's. Now we do.
Well, actually.
That's why I respect you guys at postponement, and get some more information. I would ask you that if you send letters, I know you contacted the homeowners.
We have to.
If you'll use that list that we signed in on, because I'm not on.
If you guys, if you guys would, put your addresses down, I'll make sure everyone who's signed in gets another letter.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and actually, what you're referring, you know, the, the situation that we're referring to here with Maiden's feedlot, the, um, the county, the zoning commission at that time voted not to approve that plat, but the county commissioners overturned their decision.
What you guys have to understand is we make a recommendation to approve it tonight, then it goes to the county commissioner. We're the final say on this.
So, then do we get to have a meeting with the county commissioners?
Yeah, that, that meeting's public, and, and there's also, and like I said at the beginning, there's that petition process where after the, what we, what we, what is called the final plat process. So, if we table this, you know, for two months, and then, you know, we're still not even in the final plat process, um, but after that meeting, you have 14 days to fill out a petition, you have to have 20% of the landowners, and there's 30%. So, if you get, and for this, it's two signatures. And what that does, but I want, I want to be very clear on what that petition does, just so that everyone knows. that everyone knows. What that does is that means that instead of having a two-thirds vote, a majority vote by the county commission, they have to have a three-fourths vote, is what the state regulations say. Since we don't have more than four commissioners, that means it has to be a supermajority, all three of them have to agree to sign, if that petition's fine. That's what that petition does. I just want to put that out there, so everyone knows that, you know, that petition's not a be-all, end-all, it just means that the, that the decision has to be unanimous. And you do get, it's a public meeting, you can go and you can say the same things that you said tonight at that meeting, if it gets to that point. So, and that's, that's no matter what we're deciding. Every single planning commission meeting, if it's, you know, if they were to deny it, like, like Donnie said, if you guys denied it, and then the final, you guys sign the plat, and then the county commission sees it, it's a separate hearing, because the county commission can make their decision then. And then what they decide is then the final decision. So you guys have another opportunity there as well.
I realize that the tax bases for each of these individual houses will be different, but is there some way that we could, just so that we could compare apples to apples, find out about what the tax basis would be for them compared to what the tax basis is for the 160 acres now?
Yes.
I mean, could we have that at the next meeting?
I can tell you, I can tell you right now.
Oh, okay.
Because 160 acres, as dictated by farm, is taxed at 30% on ground, and that value changes yearly based on what case state says.
Yeah.
Okay. So I can't, I can't actually, you know what?
Do you know what your taxes were in 2013? Okay. On that four, okay.
I can tell you if you give me a minute.
That's what I was hoping for. Yeah, that's what I was hoping for. Go ahead and look that up. I was also going to address, you know, you guys have talked about a previous issue with the Maiden feedlot. I'd like to state that that, that had more to do with drainage and runoff, which is under the review of KDHE.
It had, it had to do, it started though with people that had moved out and to, and started complaining, oh, we don't like the smell, you know?
The smell, yeah. But, but enforcement of runoff from a feedlot, KDHE can't enforce a smell and have any runoff. I just want to make that clear, because there's, I mean, I know they're obviously linked, but they're two separate issues, and we, you know, we are obviously superseded by state and KDHE.
Yep.
So I say a lot.
I have a question, if you're looking at, talking about tax bases, and this goes back to my original point, my concern over the groundwater, groundwater. My cattle operation generates a substantial amount of dollars that's spent in Dickinson County. I would like to grow that operation, I put a substantial investment in last year at Silas, but I've shown the, the impact of groundwater on the southeast quadrant of that section, and potential impact of groundwater on the northwest quadrant of that section. Putting houses out there obviously going to generate more tax revenue. But if I cease to exist with cattle, is that multiple or is it tax generation offset multiple or effect of what I'm spending in the community and generating off my cattle operations?
I certainly don't think it's a black and white issue. I, I don't, I don't consider it, I mean, granted, this obviously is a point of view to tax dollar, why is right in the beginning and right there in black and white, but I don't, I agree with you, I don't think it's as easy to, you know, to say it's a black and white issue, oh, this is going to make us a lot of money, it's doing. Because it, that's why we, you know, we haven't even gotten to this part of the meeting, because I think we're all going to be tabling it, but there's things called the golden factors that planning and zoning commissions have to consider, you know, and so it isn't just black and white, if it was just about tax dollars, we wouldn't have been sitting here for two hours and 15 minutes, we'd already decided.
Well, I don't want you to look excited.
No, no, I understand.
We're not.
Yeah.
The groundwater issue is.
Absolutely. I, you know, I've got something sort of written down right here, and the water is my biggest concern.
Mine as well.
Groundwater.
Water, water, no matter where they get it, water.
Storm drainage and drinking water.
They're affecting wells and affecting other people's wells on top of rural water issues.
Again, there are certain things that are under our purview and certain things that are not. I mean, if, you know, it meets our regulations as far as having enough ground to be able, for them to do wells, I mean, there's only so much we can do in that area. But I think we're tabling it tonight to ask a little bit more information from the Water District, or discussing, tabling, and nobody's made a motion yet, discussing, tabling it, ask for more information from the Water District, and about storm drainage issue.
Last year, this was taxed, for the ground, in comparison. So 1300, 16, or 1312 dollars is what I've paid now. Obviously, this is based on value of crop ground versus value of a house, it's going to be different, the tax rates are different, because a house, and all residential property is, you know, a house, if you own 80 acres, you've got a house on it, that house is taxed at 11 and 1/2 percent. The farmland is taxed at, but the values are changed, and you can talk to the county appraiser's office for those numbers. But the tax is paid in 2013 on this, and this is probably, this is public information, was 131264. So that's a $100,000 house. If you're going to compare it to that, but like Kelly said, there are other things to worth comparing it to in the long term. But then again, if you want to play the devil's advocate, the other side of that coin is, you've got now 14 people who are registering their cars here, they're paying taxes here, their kids are going to school here, whether it's Chaplin or Sullivan, you know, so there's the other side of that coin as well. And again, apples to apples, but we're not comparing apples to apples tonight.
Right, right.
So, yes.
It is 160 acres of that production, too, and so the money off of the leader, Ralph Alford, whatever that was on there, is not going to be spent at CTIMS, and a lot, I mean, that's huge.
I can honestly tell you I understand where you folks are at and your feelings. It hasn't been too terribly long that I have been on that side of the table, and I can honestly tell you, I was not happy with the decision that the board made, but it was the decision that the board made. They went through all of the golden factors, they did all of the research, they did everything that they needed to do. Did I like the answer in the end? No. Did I have to deal with it and accept it? Yes. So please don't think that even I personally don't understand what you're saying, because I get it, and, and we're listening. But I, I, I think that we need more information, and I empathize with both sides.
Can I ask Mr. Cosette just a question? Why, I mean, you have other farmland everywhere, why 25 minutes or 20 minutes from Salina, and what, 15, 20 minutes from Allen, 15 minutes, why out here? I mean, if you have all this other land somewhere, how, how did you pick that land right there? Out away from Salina and Allen?
Well, it's on a comprehensive plan for development, it's not a blacktop, that was the biggest issue, and we had water available. We have, we have looked at land in Slane County, and the water wasn't available, water hookups.
You got a section here on Dunham Road and 1700 Road, and that's where your major operation is on that corner.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Cosette tonight? You can't say this way.
You know, my experience in the building business is, when people want to move to the country, they're going to do it. And I have built a number of homes for individuals that have gone out, and they bought 80 acres, and they bought a quarter section of ground. Now, that's competing with the farmers on buying that. I grew up on a dairy farm, I've, I've had a real background all my life. I understand that people coming out, to me, it always seemed to make more sense to have them in one location than, than going wherever they wanted to go, you know, if you can control that, which you can't, you know? People can buy whatever they want to buy if they have the money to do it. As far as putting wells in, either you hit water or you don't. And nobody else can say anything about it, that's your well. Everybody in this room has that right. And, you know, I come from a family of eight kids on a dairy farm, and one of them farms right now, and probably half of us want to live in the country. I live in the country, I'm not going to get that up. And, you know, I live on an acreage, and I have that right, everybody has that right. I felt the very same things that the farmers here have, because I'm still, still related to that farm. But people still come. If they can afford to live in the country, they will do it. And they can compete with the farmers at the price of land, in some cases, they can pay more money than the farmers can. I've seen that happen many times.
Oh, yeah.
To address that, six, seven years ago, we had a gentleman that bought 60 acres, a mile from where we're talking now, on the next mile or quarter, he bought that, and he was going to build his own there, and of course, he come to me as the township trustee, about culverts and this and that, and I said, have you thought about water? And he said, well, I was going to drill a well. He drilled two dry wells, then he went to the, to the Water District, and they said, well, get your water, if you put a four-inch main from 1700 Avenue all the way down, past 1800 to a mile of four-inch pipe to your facility, and then you put it in, turn it back over to us, we'll maintain it. But that's the only way he was going to get water. He sold the plot, it's back to farming now.
And, and sometimes that's what it takes to get improvements on your, on your water system, and it happens that way, too.
All entertain a motion to, we're talking about table on it? Any more discussions that we need to have tonight?
I personally think, and I'm more than willing to make a motion that we table this particular topic so that we can get more of our questions answered.
Is there a second? It's the move to second, that we table DK-14-22 for rescheduled, for another scheduled meeting. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes, we have table DK-14-22. Dustin, can you tell us, what do we do now, and when we'll schedule another meeting?
Um, schedule it off.
Yeah, and we request to schedule it off on a regular Tuesday, so it cannot coincide with the Water District decisions we have. We're going to request more information.
In, in retrospect, normally what happens is you table it until the next month.
Okay.
But considering we're going to have to meet with the township board, we're going to have to give them, we're going to have to get some information from the Water Board, and I still have to get public notice out for every single meeting. My deadline to get public notice out would be Friday. That's why we have a 30-day Friday thing. So I would say at this point, it would probably be safer to table it until August. I will, what I'll do is tentatively, we should schedule it for that, I would say probably August 12th or 13th, but I know that's also part, you know, harvest should be pretty well done. Last year, we had a pretty big meeting, and around August, so I kind of announce, August is a week, so. So we'll, I, I figure we'll, we'll do, that August 13th. But, yeah, but what I'll do is, I'd say tentatively, and then there will also be a firm, and also help with the policy. That gives us a month, that gives John and I a month and a half of some answers, that gives the rural Water District a month or so of information, and if we have to reschedule it for the mayor, we can, and if we don't have to, you guys, if you guys want to grab this, and I'll sign a sheet, I'll get you information.
And the 13th is what day of the week?
That would be Wednesday, is, that would be the second Wednesday of the month.
Thank you all for coming, and I appreciate everyone's comments. All right. Is there any other, do you? Is there any other old business to discuss? Ask them?
Yeah.
Do you have anything for another month? Do I need? No. Sorry, she was going to leave.
You were over it, weren't you?
There.
So moved?
Move the second, that we ensure, favorite right hand, any computer, and.
Thank you, Dustin, for all of your hard work.
We're still in this book.
Well, it's great that we do it this way.
Everybody.
But I will.
I'm asking for them.
I agree.
You know, I have, we, we all.